All right, it is seven o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. Into the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, if you'd lead us in tonight's opening prayer, please.
Dear God, tonight we ask for your guidance in making the right choices for this city. We also pray for the healing and comfort of those in Ukraine. Continue to keep us all safe. In Jesus' name we pray.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Jones here, this is Dr. Dunphy.
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Here.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? And council discussion on them? Motion to adopt, please. Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, we're to the auditor slash treasurer for board. Mr. Saffington, floor is yours.
Floor is mine.
Floor is yours.
Get this done.
All right, everybody, I'll start with the treasurer's report. For December 2021. We've got here cash balance 3.752 million on page one. You'll see total interest on investments for 2021, 1,666, 18 pennies. Treasurer provided his reconciliation. On the sweep account on the next two pages coming up. With no difference at all. And. I'm looking through real quick. Looks like we've dropped all of that. You're good to go. On his last page, he provided a year-end summary. This was very helpful to my office last year at the end of 2020. It basically is just the beginning. Debits and credits and interest of everything he can see in the accounts that are the treasurer managers. And then just increases and decreases down at the bottom. You can see both the bank accounts, the cash balances of the city increase. And the total interest earned on all accounts, not just the sweep account. So a really helpful yearly summary that Mike has provided a second time. So that's December. On January, we see total funds 4.494 million. Much larger balance because of wastewater treatment plant project funding. I think it was a million or so. We were just in between getting the funds and paying it. And his reconciliation. Coming down to a zero-dollar difference. And honestly, it was a really smooth start for January, so. He didn't leave me any comments or anything for you guys. But I think that covers it. Scott, can I ask, are we able to? Open up that link I emailed everybody on this computer here?
I did not prepare, no sir.
No?
I failed to prepare.
Is there a way to email or send it to this, or do you know, is there's anything connected to that?
I personally email, but I logged out of it.
Okay.
Shoot.
All right. Well, I gave everybody electronic versions of the auditor's report. For those at home, it's available on the website already. But. I will pull it up here. Bear with me just a second. Okay, so I've got a December 2021 auditor's report. Combined with January 2022. If you remember, I had a positive COVID test the last time we were giving meeting, or giving the reports. That's why we have combined reports. In December, the city's expenses outpaced revenues for the month of December. It's very common for December and January for expenses to be higher than our revenues. So we outlay a lot of things to close the year. And then we open the year and outlay a lot of our yearly payments. So we have 1.6 million in revenues to 1.75 in expenses. Which are much larger than usual. That's because we had large wastewater treatment plant project expenses. And that project is at full, full speed. I put on the report this time some of the top expenses for 2021, so that council could get high-level understanding of what much of the taxpayer's money go towards. So the largest expense, single expense for a city hall, pretty much expected at any city hall in the country, is payroll at 1.842 million. Next up, if anybody thinks their AEP bill is bad, our AEP bills for the year at $263,092.8. Followed up by Columbia Gas at almost 15,000. Utility parts and repairs at 334,926. That includes the new water project that was just beginning at the end of the year. And water chemicals for the plan, 106,000. And our friends over at police and fire, including vehicle purchases at 119,873.81 cents. Of Nelsonville City Managers. So all funds combined, we ended the year at 3.559 million. General fund at 664,000. I won't read through all the fund balances, it feels necessary. I just wrote here, the fund balances generally crept upwards in 2021. And January 2022, all our fund balances dropped a little bit, just as we outlay a ton of our yearly annual expenses. Which kept myself, Scott, and Judy very busy in January. We've got the two cash statement positions. And then I just wanted to end it with, we ended 2021, another crazy year in the world. Another exciting year at Nelsonville and a year of change. So I wanted to put some of the things we accomplished, either in my office or financially related. Where the abatement program opened and closed for the first full year successfully. The IRS penalties that we successfully negotiated away. Clean city audit for the first time in years. The accounting payroll software brought into the cloud. Which prevents destruction of the data. Say if the river comes up like it keeps doing, flood city hall, we no longer will be without books, which many cities would be. Fortunately, we've gotten to a place where our data is safe. We, of course, are getting utility software upgrades for free. We were going to be charged over 30,000, but we found an old agreement from 2012 covering the purchase. Migrated purchasing online from all my department head friends here at Long Door. That was a lot of fun. We ended the year with our last paper purchase. We were doing paper purchases from quote to approval to check writing. We're now in all electronic process, which is really exciting to me as an auditor. And employee portal, all employees can access their pay stubs, W2s, updates, submit time off requests online. And we increased the city's percentage of paperless and online pay utility accounts from 10% to 19%. There's a final rule of 25% at the end of this year. So, just some of the things we've been up to this year. And then with that, I take any questions?
No questions?
Thank you.
You have your free tonight.
I know.
Thank you, Mr. Saffington.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor's for court. Full call, I believe that's going to be in our report later on. So citizens' comments, do we have anything?
We need to approve.
Oh, sorry, you're right. Motion to approve the auditor and treasurer's report.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, any citizens' comments? Did anybody have anything, is there anything, Scott, that you know? Where, sir? Okay. Business and organizational comments? Okay, committee discussions?
We had a planning and development community meeting. And we talked about designated outdoor refreshment area, the Dora.
Dora.
Mr. Justin is going to be looking into that a little more. See if we can proceed with getting that approved. For an area that would basically encompass the square down Rocky Bootway to Rocky to Starbucks barbecue. The Alphonsa Pride Club wouldn't be included. But, so we're looking into that. I've also had a discussion about some tools for short-term rentals. You know, like rentals of less than 30 days, so I think like Airbnb, VRBOs, HomeAway, Craigslist ads, whatever those things would be. So we're working on developing that. And then also talked about signage for each end of town, which we're working on to get. Since like the roundabout went in at this end and the new off-ramps at that end, the signage has kind of disappeared or is not sufficient anymore. So we're working on figuring out exactly what we want, what we want to share at each end of town to encourage people to come. Now that we have the high-speed charging stations for cars, that's something else that we're going to want to be able to like direct people to. Those are all things that we're working on.
Anyone else?
Yeah, utilities meeting and discuss rates for the charging stations. Could I have the other second thing?
So we talked about the new finalized plan that we're submitting for Phase Two, as far as we were able to add water lines to the state underneath the 5K. We're actually at 5.2K. I sent out an email. The big addition is adding Franklin Street to that from High Grove down to Fort Street. And then we were able to add the lower part of John Street onto the end of Frederick. So that is a very nice addition for Phase Two water that we do for submission in March.
And it was all just high-water storm strains. We, we finally discussed possibilities of storm drain fees. But we need to check with the attorney to see if that's something, that would have to be thrown about or if that's something that goes through a committee and then run to council.
Okay. All right, department updates. Ms. Barbara?
All right, I guess I'll go first. Mine's really short and sweet, but don't be fooled, I've spent probably majority of my time working on the properties to be demoed with a land bank. It's taken up a lot of my time, a lot of running, a lot of photographing, more documentation. We still have rental registrations that are coming in. We're looking pretty good right now as far as folks that have paid for their rental registration. And we've had several new folks come in and sign up for rental registrations. Vacant building registrations are still coming in. I have sent a letter out to landowners that have vacant buildings about the grant that we received. Or well, we didn't receive, the land bank received, asking them if they wanted to partake in, in that money. Haven't received any information back yet. And just doing a lot of auditions, like civil service stuff, studying for testing. With police and fire, we've got a test tomorrow, or Wednesday. Helping Scott with grants, you name it, just little things. That's it.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Barbara? Is there any kind of timeline on these buildings coming down?
So Rick Wasserman informed me last, the beginning, no, the end of last week that we're looking at around July for a start. And then we've got probably three land bank houses that's already been approved from '21 to be demoed in '22. And then we've got a couple individuals that bought some land bank properties that had buildings on them, and they, they've started demoing, which makes it really nice. So we're getting a lot of the light cleaned up. Yeah.
Great job. Okay, anyone else? All right, Chief Fitch?
Let's start off with mileage. I don't have the mileage recorded.
Checking.
I cannot get that up there.
You should roll it up.
All right, so. These are, for mayor's court, I'll go with mayor's court first. So, so far for the month of February, we, we brought in, this is paid fines, $2,727.
There it is.
All right. And for the year, that brings our total to 5305. We currently have 104 open mayor's court warrants. Again, that number is pretty high because we, you know, until a couple months ago, we never really started. My knowledge, it wasn't really necessarily enforced. However, that seems to be a regular. I can tell everybody that our jail bills are going to be, they're elevated. Probably much higher than have been in probably years past because we're making a lot more actual fiscal arrests and people being paid. And the jail's been pretty accommodating lately, so a lot more people spending time actually in jail. As far as the police department, just calls for just basic service, we had 317 in February, and there's up to the right, your total calls for the year. 11 warrant arrests, 26 for the year. Those are just people we come in contact with that we have warrants for, not counting the other statistical arrests that we have before arresting them for charges. The general arrests was nine on, and 21 for the year. Traffic tickets, incident reports, those are criminal investigations that we're currently upon. And call record reports is one where we go, and they're just called for a service that doesn't warrant a criminal investigation. Where we're assisting the public.
Chief, can I ask some questions?
Sure.
So you're saying this column, 2020, is all of 2022, not like last February 2022?
No, 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 it's just for
Oh, 2022, okay.
January, February.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking 2021, I was like, wait, we had almost 50% of the calls in February.
Yeah, it took me a second on that one, too.
Yeah, okay, I was like, what is going on?
No, I mean, this was just, that was the month of February, but that's our total for the year.
That's over the year, okay.
And I keep a running tally for the year. So some of the things here lately is Lexipol, I took, I completed an orientation process, getting that implemented. And it's going pretty well. It is kind of a slow process, but it's very tedious, but it's, it's going to be a really nice finished product. I'm bouncing, they're bouncing ideas, sending me back what I'm asking, and, and it's in compliance. So that's, you know, those are going to slowly be coming out and being implemented. Which again, all the officers will receive training and the sign-off electronic signature that show that they've read the and are familiar with and receive training and procedures. Last month, we had, for external training, we had two officers go to the Reed School of Interview and Interrogation, which is probably the best interview and interrogation school in the, in the country. I think it's pretty well-received as such, and we had an officer attend leadership training. GPS systems for the cruisers, they're being tested, they've been a little slow, there's been some technical difficulties. But when, when they have been up and running, they seem to be, you know, the data seems to be pretty telling. Hopefully, what we're going to have, once we get everything finalized, and if we elect or you elect to go forward with that in all the cruisers, one of the things is going to be nice to, how many, how many hours, you know, guys making sure no one's stationary for too long periods of time. It's going to be nice to update the commuter village of Boca, how many hours and times and dates and miles we've driven in Boca to show that we're giving them their service that they're asking for. So that can be, you know, I'm looking forward to that. I wanted to thank, we had a large, high-profile trial last week, many of you may have heard, with Mr. Platt. He was found guilty, and it was investigated by the Nelsonville Police Department, he was found guilty of involuntary manslaughter, felony in first degree, and child endangering enough three, he gets sentenced on March 22. So maybe that'll help break some closure to Eli Spangler's family and friends. The Boca Patrol, we, we haven't started really writing a lot of tickets, but that's, we, I feel like we're to the point now where that's, it's time to maybe change that a little bit. We've stopped a lot, a lot of cars and, and give them private warning unless it was just extremely egregious or they didn't have a driver's license. Wanting to get people used to seeing cruisers in the area all hours of the day, so tickets should increase in Boca. Calls for service went up a little last month. I still don't think a lot of the people is used to calling, but it seems to be going well. I mean, I've stopped and talked to a lot of people. Somebody, you know, they have different, various different needs and wants, and most of it's traffic-related. But we have had calls for service and made a few arrests there. We took, on the 17th of February, we took a civil service sergeant's examination for promotion. We had two officers that passed that, successfully passed that test. Officer KJ Tracy and Officer Devin Tolliver, who then tested that. We got interviews tentatively set up for this Friday at 9:00 AM. It's going to be conducted for those two to complete their scoring. At that point, I'd recommend calculate all the scores, I'll submit that to Scott, and be sure he'll pass that on to all of the major investigation baseball player comes out and talks. There's a entry level, as Becky mentioned, a civil service test tomorrow, here in this room at 5:30. So that's to create a eligibility list for future positions that may or may not become available. So I'm, I'm excited to have that. We haven't been able to have a, an actual on-call list for a while, so I'll be glad to get that set up. And that's all I've got.
Any questions for Chief Fitch?
So I've got some questions, chief. So the, I was going to ask about the, about Boca and the number of calls to service. Do you know how many of those have come from Boca area?
I do, but I don't have that data.
I was wondering how, how many, you know, that may have affected us by. The GPS and the cruisers, you think that's something, you, you mentioned that there's some technical difficulties. I mean, those bugs are weak to work through, you think it's?
Yeah, it's been more on T-Mobile's part to this point. They had, the guy that was supposed to be working with us, he's changed, he's been, he took some time off. And we finally got ahold of him today, and actually, we got a new guy, we're going to assign a new representative tomorrow, so I'm trying to, I think that might help us a little bit.
So that you're opening the data a little bit?
But I, I mean, from what I've seen, it, it's very helpful. I think there's a lot of positives to it. Really, you know, for, for what I consider a minimal amount. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of monitoring, you know, monitoring that you can do with it. Things like that, speeds, idle time, you know. Obviously, where somebody's at, there's an officer safety element involved to it, to where officers, you know, if they're not able to be reached by, you know, radio or by phone, then we have a location of where they're at, and we can go right to their cruiser at least. And there's lots of things. There's notification for instant braking and things like that, where you'd probably assume that a crash had occurred. Again, speeds, one of the things that, for obvious reasons, that I, I monitor, and we, we do get some calls on is responding to emergency calls, we're running lights and sirens, you'll be able to very easily determine how fast somebody was going, you know, and where their speed was, and, you know, I've seen, I personally have been involved, and sometimes people will say that they, we was going exceedingly fast, when I was involved in it, I know it wasn't. Then there's times that we did get calls, and I felt we was probably going too fast. So it looks that way, lights and sirens in the moment, but this way, we'll be able to accurately, if somebody has a complaint, I mean, obviously, it can be looked at immediately, and start monitoring that and start checking in with the others, make sure they're responding responsibly.
And then, are you going to be presenting to Boca then, like some statistics of, you know, calls and outcomes of those?
Yeah, we, we've got them broken down over there, but what we was waiting to do is, because there's been minimal, like I said, there's been, you can, there's only been like, maybe I want to say six or eight tickets, and the calls to service have been minimal. But again, the reason there's been so, there's been a lot of traffic stops over there, but there hasn't been a lot of tickets issued, and that was by design. I didn't think we should do that. I mean, again, Boca would be a speed trap no more than Nelsonville does. So I thought that was the right thing to do. There will be an increase, we're not going to start targeting everybody. There'll be an increase in tickets, they'll start going up.
And, and the GPS will allow you to denote how much we're spending over there, that way you can present to them and say
So, but, and I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to present
What they're getting for their
Yeah, and you guys as well. That way, if there's any controversy, is we're spending too much time here, too much time there, or from administrative standpoint, for me, you know, I can identify if people spending too much time in the office, if they're spending too much time stationary. You know, so there's some administrative functions to it, too, that I really like to have the availability. But again, the speeds was another one that I can appreciate, you know.
And if I understand correctly, then the way you're talking about that, most importantly, then we will track mileage then with that GPS, right?
Yes, there will be a mileage. I mean, you guys, you guys will have, you can feel free to contact me personally, and I'll give you the mileage.
It only works if you prepare in 2013.
And also, you can, you can make sure that the BP is secure.
Yes.
At all times. Madison Street.
Yeah, Madison Street.
Well, that's what we have in town, with this, colters and blinds, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, hey, I have a question for you, so.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that we have a, we've been doubling it up in the cruiser, and I think that's great, I think, you know. Safety numbers, was like, two people go to a call. Is that something you're, you're opting now, or? On some shifts, well, there's, there's, there's advantages to it. One, with the price of fuel, it's always beneficial to try to cut back a little bit on, on some fuel costs. But there's a certain amount, I want the guys to, to work, to ride together, I think there's a lot of benefits to it. But I don't want them doing it all the time, especially at nights and things for response, if you get a second call, then I want people to be able to respond and break off there and things like that. But there's times where I'm encouraging it because some of the officers, it's almost like some additional training, you've got other officers that's got strengths, and I asked them to work with other officers on some of the, like the investigative techniques and skills. There's some that's a little more proactive in traffic, so they're kind of helping their partner be a little more, come a little more proactive to traffic, and some is more narcotics-related, and they ride with somebody. So kind of as a peer-to-peer mentoring, if you will. There's been a lot of statistics shown that it's beneficial. There's a few little downsides, like I said, you've got less cruisers out, so you got, it's hard to break off and go separate ways. But a lot of the times when they're doing that, on day shift and stuff, I'm usually always here, so there's always somebody else that can go another direction. And like today, we had three officers out plus myself. So we're trying to beef up where we're getting the most calls, and primarily, the busiest 12 hours by far is from 10A to 10P. Actually, 10P to 8P is our primary calls for service, a large percentage of that comes in during those, those times. That 10-hour stretch. So I'm trying to beef up patrol in those areas.
I do like the two officers, the cruiser.
Yeah, there's some advantages, and I think it is a good chance for, for the officers, like I said, to help one another out if one of them might be a little stronger than one area than another. So there's pros, I just don't want to do it all the time, because I don't want somebody to be able to say, well, everybody's the one cruiser that's out there.
Right, 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 right.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Sure get that mileage on out. All right, we are to second reading ordinances. Ordinance 11-22.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into an Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan accounts agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for construction of the Phase Two Water System Improvement Project and dedicating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Okay, any council discussion? Moving to adopt. So move, second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 12-22, second reading?
An ordinance authorizing city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into an Ohio EPA water
EPA water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for construction of Phase 3 regional collection system improvement project and designating a dedicated repayment source for any loan funds that may be required.
Any council discussion on this matter? Motion to adopt. Second. Thank you.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Who are you? Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. 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 Duffy?
She called me.
I know, I did.
Really about an eighth of a person. All righty, ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance 15-22, I need someone to introduce it, please. Thank you.
An ordinance approving change order for VSW lift station replacement contract and authorizing city manager Scott Frank to sign and authorize said change order and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract, VSW lift station replacement, whereas several items of the contract need adjusted in order to complete the contract. Whereas this change order changes the fee paid to AEP by Tam Construction Incorporated in order to upgrade the services from 240 volts to 480 volts, which is more efficient and is needed for the increased pump capacity. And whereas the change will increase the contract price by $2,468.44 and is summarized as attached in Exhibit 1. Now therefore beordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves change order for the VSW lift station replacement contract as described in Exhibit 1. This change order changes the fee paid to AEP by Tam Construction Incorporated in order to upgrade the service from 240 volts to 480 volts, which is more efficient and is needed for the increased pump capacity. The contract price will increase by $2,468.44. City manager Scott Frank shall have the authority to enter into, accept, and/or authorize change, contract change order for VSW lift, lift station replacement as shown in Exhibit 1. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article 4, Section 4.09 through 4.11 as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules of 28th February 2022.
Any, any council discussion on this matter?
Yes, I have a question. So was this change, was that our request, or was that recommended by our engineer?
Yeah, it came in second. So originally, they found two 40 pumps, but 480 came along later, and the work, did the process is trying to switch as many as we can over to 480, just because they have a lot more low-end torque.
Single page, three.
Okay. They have any timeline on it. We should start construction late April, beginning of May.
All right. Motion to suspend.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Can you get an extra bit? All right. Ordinance?
I want to do that elections now.
All right. Ordinance 16-22, I need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance adopting change order for water system improvement meter contract and authorizing city manager Scott Frank to sign and authorize said change order and declaring it an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract, water system, systems improvement meter, whereas several items of the contract need adjusted in order to complete the contract. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by $34,904.16 and is summarized as attached in Exhibit 1. Now therefore beordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves change order for the water systems improvements meter contract as described in Exhibit 1. The contract price will be increased by a sum of $34,904.16. Specifically, this change order, A, Edition 1, Item 21, new meter relocated from concrete driveway and installed with setter, AMI meter, ring and lid complete due to concrete driveway location for an additional price of $2,019.56. Replaces lids, rings to accommodate odd sizes encountered in the field with the purpose of standardization through the service area for an additional price of $31,984.60. Polytube for line repairs at an additional price of $900. City manager Scott Frank shall have the authority to enter into, accept, and/or authorize the contract change order for water systems improvement meter contract as shown in Exhibit 1. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article 4, Section 4.09 through 4.11 as an emergency in the operation of the government, of the city government, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the 28th February 2022.
Any council discussion on this matter?
Yeah, I've got questions again. Sorry if, since I missed the utility meeting, if this was discussed there. So is this, are these the folks that are going around and changing out our meters currently?
So what a lot of this is, is just, for example, the concrete one, the gentleman, he had poured several years ago, he poured a brand-new concrete driveway, and it's not feasible to go in there and change any of his, so what we're going to do is put a new pit beside his driveway in the grass, so we're going to reroute a new line through the street and then back to the new pit, so we don't cut a hole, and it is new concrete. It's cheaper than doing the concrete.
Tie him to the old service line, it's already up under the driveway.
It's in Boca. So it would, he did it before we owned any of it. And then the tubing, for example, there's gray air. So the customer's responsible for their water line from the meter to the house. Well, in Boca, where they were changing out the setters, the pits were changed mainly in Boca. There's a couple in Nelsonville, but mainly in Boca. And the galvanized line, you can literally walk across the dirt and break a galvanized line, depending on how fragile it is. If they're out there and they're changing a pit and it starts leaking, technically, it's on the customer. I wasn't comfortable with that, so with all the customers, we worked out a deal with them. Usually, we ended up giving them the line, and they would end up changing it. So that's what the line is on there. And then $34,000 one, what was that one? That was?
The lids and the rings.
Oh, the lids and the rings. That's just because the, what's my?
We've got three different sizes.
Yeah.
It's what was in Nelsonville originally, three different sizes. So now we're going to all, everything's identical, so we don't have to stock as much as different size, all the different stuff, everything's going to be the same, so we can keep minimal on hand, and that way, we got it if we need it.
Those are requests that we did to standardize what we have versus sticking with what was Anymore? Okay.
Motion to suspend. So move. Second.
Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. I move.
One second. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
All right. Ordinance 17-22, need someone to introduce it, please. I'll introduce. Thank you.
An ordinance accepting mobile home gifted to the city by owner Rockley Properties LLC and authorizing the city to place the mobile home up for auction and declaring an emergency. Whereas Rockley Properties LLC has gifted a mobile home located on city property to the city of Nelsonville. Whereas the city would like to accept the gifted mobile, mobile home from Rockley Properties LLC and express sincere gratitude for their thoughtfulness, kindness, and generosity. Whereas the city will immediately place the mobile home up for auction. Now therefore beordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville accepts the generous gift of the mobile home from Rockley Properties LLC as demonstrated in the title attached and incorporated to this ordinance as Exhibit 1. The city manager shall have the authority to take any necessary steps to transfer the title to the city. The city manager shall have the authority to place the mobile home up for auction. The starting bid shall be $250, and the mobile home shall be sold as is. The buyer of the mobile home shall bear at all costs removing the mobile home from the city. The buyer shall remove the property within 30 days of purchase. The city auditor shall have the authority to accept the purchase price from buyer and place it in the appropriate fund pursuant to law or as approved by city council. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article 4, Sections 4.09 through 4.11 as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules of 28th February 2022.
Any council discussion on this matter? Or is this mobile home?
So this mobile home is on Backstreet, right next to our lift station. So we've been trying to get this thing moved for over a year. It's been there for quite some time. The lot that, the lot that it sits on is only 50 feet wide, and the trailer's 80 feet long. It's sitting on two of our lots, 18 feet on one side and 2 feet on another lot of ours. And they, the property owner sold the trailer to Rockley Properties up north, and he has been unsuccessful finding someone to tow it north to where he was wanting to take it. And we were in the process of going through and pulling it through the court to get rid of it, and he just contacted us, literally, the same day we were talking to the court. And we told him what we were doing, and he just asked if he could donate it to us, and he said, well, yes, you can donate it to us. And he overnighted us the title, and we had it the next day. So that's the easiest way for us to get rid of it. So literally, it's sitting right behind my daughter's house.
How's the auction process for it?
Um, it's, so we do it a couple different ways. This one, so sometimes we use the online auction, which works pretty good for us. It's, what is that word? Yeah, GovDeals. And we have really good luck on there, and then sometimes we just put them on Facebook and do silent auction. So you just bring your bids, and we'll come in here just like bidding a job and open up the envelopes, and whoever's the highest bid wins. Usually, it's a little, it's, okay, it's, but yeah, the other way around. So I don't really?
Can you mention if someone buys it, it cannot stay in the city?
Oh, yes, and it doesn't stay in the city, because it doesn't meet any of the requirements to stay in the city, so it's got to leave.
It's too old.
Okay. Motion to suspend.
I'm, motion to suspend.
Second. Got ahead of yourself there, didn't you?
A little bit. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. So move. Second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
I have one other quick question on that, though. Are there, is there services attached to the trailer that need to be?
No, you actually had it all disconnected. Okay. He put the axles underneath of it, all the underpinning, but it's ready to hook up. They're going to have to cut down a tree or two, but it is ready to hook onto and drag out. They even had it all prepped and ready to go.
And it's city property it's sitting on?
Uh, so there's three lots that it's sitting on, two of the three lots is city.
Okay. So the trees that need to be cut down, is that on city property?
Um, I have to double-check, but I think so.
And, and the city's granting permission if they need to cut those down to make that happen?
Absolutely. In fact, we may just go cut it up more if it's on our property. So they're not anything that man would be upset about.
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure too, that the, that city's, you know?
Sure.
Absolving them of any wrongdoing there.
Absolutely. In fact, if, if they are ours, Jason will take care of it. Thanks, Jason.
He's all training there.
Okay. So we are, you need a motion to amend the agenda to add ordinances 18-22, 19-22?
20-22.
Resolutions are on there.
Those are all, they're all on there. I will make that motion to amend the agenda to add those ordinances.
Second. I'll say.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Duffy? Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
All right. All right, so ordinance 18-22, I need someone to introduce it, please. I will. Thank you.
An ordinance amending the 2022 appropriations ordinance to appropriate the unappropriated balance to the following, the sum of $2,000 from unappropriated balance to number 300 Fund Park and Rec League expenses, line item 300-250-80010 on Nelsonville York Junior High Baseball Team and declaring an emergency. Whereas the appropriations need amended to appropriate money from the unappropriated balance to the number 300 Fund Park and Rec League, line item 300-250-80010 for the Nelsonville York Junior High Baseball Team. Now therefore beordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The 2022 appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the number 300 Fund Park and Rec League, line item 300-250-80010 for the Nelsonville York Junior High Baseball Team as the following. The sum of $2,000 from the unappropriated balance to number 300 Fund Park and Rec League expense, line item 300-250-67596, Fund Junior High Baseball Team. Total appropriation, appropriated balance is decreased by a set amount. Total appropriations in the 300 Fund Park and Rec League, line item 300-250-80010,
Nelsonville York Junior High Baseball Team are increased by set amount. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. The law enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules for twenty eighth day of February two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any council discussion on this matter? This is for the Junior High Baseball Team. Is this how they typically do?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're in the main game.
Yeah, we've done this for the last three, four years.
It's like the ones, the sport that the, it's the one like, the school doesn't sponsor.
It's the two, yeah, it's little softball and baseball.
Middle school, um, baseball and softball. They don't sponsor. So the city is taking care of it. I'll move, uh, to.
Suspend, motion to suspend. Second.
Um, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah.
Motion to adopt?
I'll move again.
All right. Motion to adopt.
Omen.
Jones? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
No.
No?
No.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Just for clarity, this is for the baseball and softball programs. This is just for the baseball. Softball.
Ensuring that we did for the softball.
If they need it, because they would do another appropriation, but they have it sent forward.
Yes, we will do both.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that people understand or afford both.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Absolutely. So, and this should cover, there was something, there was a little bit left over, but they should, this should cover them for at least this year. They have to buy all the catcher's equipment because the stuff that we bought is not. Void, you know, batting homes and everything else.
Okay, uh, ordinance twenty dash twenty-two. Get someone to introduce it, please.
Nineteen dash twenty-two.
Oh, nineteen dash twenty-two. I'm sorry.
I'll introduce nineteen dash twenty-two.
There we go.
An ordinance authorizing city manager Scott Frank to take all steps necessary to scrap old water meter parts, water meter lids, broken fire, fire hydrant, and water valve and miscellaneous metal and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is in possession of several old water meter parts, old water meter lids, broken fire hydrant, and water valve and miscellaneous metal. Whereas the city would like to scrap all of those items. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby authorizes city manager Scott Frank to take all legal steps necessary to scrap several old water meter parts, old water meter lids, broken fire hydrant, and water valve and miscellaneous metal. City manager Scott Frank shall take all steps, legal steps necessary to scrap several old water meter parts, old water meter lids, broken fire hydrant, and water valve and miscellaneous metal. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article Four, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government and necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. The law enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules for twenty eighth day of February two thousand twenty-two.
Any council discussion on this matter? Uh, motion to suspend? Second.
Uh, Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Let's see the end of the light. Ordinance twenty dash twenty-two. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing city manager Scott Frank to take all steps necessary to sell old functioning water meter lids and to sell old concrete precast sewer structures and declaring it an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is in possession of several functioning water meter lids and old concrete precast sewer structures. Whereas the city would like to sell all of those items. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager, the city of Nelsonville hereby authorizes city manager Scott Frank to take all legal steps necessary to sell several functioning water meter lids and old concrete precast sewer structure. City manager Scott Frank shall take all legal steps necessary to sell several functioning water meter lids and old concrete precast sewer structures. The city auditor shall place the revenues from the sales in the appropriate fund and line item. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article Four, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. The law enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules for twenty eighth day of February two thousand twenty-two.
All right. Any council discussion on this matter? Do we have a, uh, iron line already?
No, sir. It's just one of those that, for our old plastic water meters that are part of it in the lids. We're gonna contact some of our neighbors that use those parts still and see if they have any need for them. And go from there. And then the precast structures, um, again, just folks in the area that are using them, see if they have any need for it.
Yeah, if they don't, we have a means of it.
Um, we can put them on the bid site that we mentioned earlier, Gov, uh,
GovDeals?
Yeah, GovDeals, and see if we can get any traction there. As far as all the brass goes, um, our community service folks are cleaning that for us, so we're able to scrap that at top dollar.
Motion to suspend? Still move.
Okay. Mr. Booth? Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Just three more. And there's no double pages. Okay. All right, resolution twenty-two sixty-seven. Need someone to introduce it, please? I'll be happy to introduce the paddling resolution. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
A new resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application for paddling enhancement grant and to take all necessary steps to complete said application. Whereas the state of Ohio through the Department of Natural Resources Waterways Safety Fund Administrator Financial Assistance for Public Voting Access. And whereas the city of Nelsonville desires financial reimbursement under the paddling enhancement grant program. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. City of Nelsonville approves the filing, of filing an application for paddling grant, paddling enhancement grant financial assistance.
Get a little stung here, right?
Scott Frank, city manager, hereby authorized and directed to file and execute an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and provide all encompassing documentation required to be eligible for possible financial assistance. The city of Nelsonville agrees that it has and will obligate the funds required to satisfy, to satisfactorily complete the project under the terms and conditions of the cooperative agreement if the project is accepted for financial assistance. The law enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the twenty eighth day of February two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, we just first reading, it's a resolution.
Yeah, first reading.
So, um, thank you.
Okay.
So first of all, nobody's getting free paddles.
Okay.
Um, so motion, any council discussion on this matter?
Okay.
Motion to adopt? Second.
I will. Um, Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It's got a great name. We should plug for it every year.
Yes.
All right, resolution twenty-two sixty-eight. Need someone to introduce it, please?
Thank you.
A resolution approving participation in region ten governance structure under the Ohio One Memorandum of Understanding. Okay, um, this, this will be filled in after you give the motion. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is a local government that has adopted and approves the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding, which establishes a mechanism to disperse settlement proceeds from OBR litigation into Ohio's communities to help obey the opioid crisis, including allocations of local government and regions through the statewide foundation. And whereas this jurisdiction is a participant in region ten as established by the memorandum. And whereas pursuant to the memorandum, each region shall create their own governance, governance structure. So it ensures all local governments have input and equitable representation regarding regional decisions, including representations on the statewide foundation board and selection of projects to be funded from the region, regional share. And whereas regions that have the responsibility responsibility to make submissions regarding the allocation of funds, projects that will equitably serve the needs of the entire region. Whereas it is found that the local government structure attached here too as exhibit A ensures all of the governments in this region have input and equitable representation regarding regional decisions under the memorandum. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. Subject to and effective on the concurrence of all local governments in region ten, this legislative body hereby approves and enters into a regional governance agreement, governance agreement attached here too as exhibit A. It is found and determined that all former actions of this legislative body relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting and that all deliberations that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements. This resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, wealth, welfare, and safety. The reason for the emergency is to ensure prompt pursuit of funds to assist in abiding the opioid epidemic through Ohio. The law enacted by council on first reading for twenty eighth day of February two thousand twenty-two.
All right. Any council discussion on this matter? Is this related to the big settlements came through this week?
Um, I don't believe so. So the county's starting to put together and we've only had one meeting. And I don't even fully understand it myself, but for us to be a part of it, this is how we become a part of it. And.
You know, follow the resolution in order to be able to file an application.
Yes. I wish I could tell you more. It's a secret swirl. It's so secret, I don't even know.
Well, that's top secret. Okay, um, motion to adopt? Second. Thank you. Right.
Um, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Jones? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
All right, um, that's a good idea. So we are to the city manager's report, resolution twenty-nine was a duplicate, so don't worry about that. Um, twenty, so city manager, you have a form, Mr. Frank?
Already. I'll try to go through it pretty quick. Um, the first thing, we finalized our paving. So the four streets that we're going to do, St. John Street, and we're on the schedule for the middle of April to the end of April. That's the look for. Oh, okay.
He's giving me a weird look.
Oh.
It's just corners, I guess.
Say, St. John Street, um, they're wrapping up now with Columbia Gas is up there, so that'll be the last one, so the water line's done, gas line's done. So that'd be nice when it's finished. Frank Street, uh, we are replacing the two inch water line up there. Jason, these guys went through today. We had an inventor, made sure we have all the parts to do it and getting everything ordered that we need so they can go replace that. Clinton Street, um, we have to replace or repair the whole top left. Not a big deal. We'll take care of that right before they come in. And then at the very end of Conner, uh, we replaced the two inch water line up there last year, just past where they repaired Mill Street. Speaking of Mill Street, um, they will, uh, and it's supposed to be repaired, meaning the uh, curbs widened out and all the landscaping taken care of by the end of April. So as far as I know, everything's on track for that still to happen. Something changes, I'll let you know. But that's still on track. And that's, that's it for paving this year, um, as far as actually the paving goes. The rest of the budget will be spent on patching. I have no intention of sealing anything this year. I want to wait another year to see how the ceiling holds up before I spend any more money on it. And then, uh, we are gonna paint, uh, make sure to put some paint on Columbus Street. Somebody wants streets, Columbus Street hash marks, so the Columbus Street hash marks, the parking on Columbus Street, um, gets taken care of. And, uh, like that'll take care of the streaks for the most part. And then switching over to grants, everything that submitted to A P to get reimbursed for the chargers, they're out there now and you guys haven't seen them, Cruzone Five. Last I saw, one of them was still, uh, showing unavailable. That was on the charge point side of it. They're just working on some programming with it. Uh, right now they're free. Uh, the next meeting, you guys will have your ordinance to, uh, to officially set the rate. Uh, as we talked about in utility meeting, uh, we talked about doing introductory rates as free, which is pretty common with these things. Usually for a three to six month trial, just to try and garner some interest in them and get people to come off the beaten path for them. So, uh, we'll get that at the next meeting and then, um, hopefully, uh, did you get that correct? No. And, uh, we did learn some interesting things. Uh, so there's some citizens working on it now. The House, if you're looking at it directly to the right, the White House, it's not the original house, but the spot right there was the first house in Ohio to have electricity. So oddly enough, we put the electric chargers right there beside it. And there's some pretty cool history along with this. And so folks are putting, uh, put together some history and possibly put together maybe a little plaque to put, to cover up those nasty shut offs that they put right in the middle, but maybe to create some sort of tourist attraction. Like one of the historical markers.
Yes, sir. I've, I've seen it suggested that we put up billboards. How, how many electric vehicle people find out about this charge station?
So the way they put vehicle charged, what's that?
It doesn't have.
They all have apps in or, uh, you know, this, you know, car guy, why don't you, you explain it better, I can't.
He set you up for the, you know, I'll open you, man. All you gotta do is don't. I've heard you coach softball.
I've heard you coach softball.
Well, I've tried.
You send the girls home crying.
It definitely doesn't run the base.
My daughter run laps when she's late, he drove there.
Yeah.
At least I know. Mine too. And, uh, so for everybody at home that did ask about the advertising, yes, all these E V vehicles, they have software inside the vehicles or folks use a phone, but they plan their trips, if they're going on long trips before they even leave the house, that shows all these uh, charging stations, so they know where they're gonna stop before they even leave. The benefit to, uh, what we have versus what a lot of other people have is our chargers, uh, charge faster than what most other folks have out there. For example, Athens has a level three charger next to their swimming pool. There's not much to do around the swimming pool. There's an Applebee's and a Steak and Shake. Which is cool. I mean, I, and then, uh, you know, we have Rocky and then we have, uh, the mine and Fulbrook's, you know, so hopefully we get more, um, what?
Soon to bakery.
Soon to bakery, maybe someday a wine bar, whatever. And, uh, so then, um, so that's the idea, basically to get it there, come, they have their stuff ahead of time, right? So, and then the apps have the stuff, uh, all planned out. But what I found out is a lot of these apps, I don't go about the cars, I've never been in an E V vehicle, electric vehicle, but, uh, a lot of them leave reviews like Yelp. So, uh, ideally, we want to have positive reviews. And, um, we know what the building looks like behind it now. We all know in this room that it's being renovated, it's gonna look really nice when it's done. However, right now, the first pictures probably aren't the best, especially with the mud. Lord knows the curb, right? And, uh, so especially after we get it doctored up, the, the curb landscaping and then when the new porch gets put on the front and put a nice sign on there, you know, we can all go create and pretend to have E Vs and put our own, uh, or put our reviews on there and get it built up, but, uh, that's the plan anyways. So moving on, sewer plant, the new sewer plant's on track. Uh, we're still anticipating at least a two month delay, but it hasn't hit us yet. And, uh, the B F W lift station, we already talked about that, late April, beginning of May. Starting phase three, uh, the sewer bid slid a week. It was supposed to be this week due, but we just talked about it tonight and slid it to next week. Hoping to get more bidders. We cannot get anybody to buy two point seven million dollars right now, it's just too small of a fish. So, uh, it's just too small of a fish right now.
It's phase three.
Yep. And what you guys, so just to, just as a reminder, so phase three is one hundred percent grant unless we have to go up. And what you guys pass tonight in an ordinance is authorizing us to go to a loan if needed. Um, we're not convinced that, we're not convinced that the money's wrong. Um, in fact, there's, it's pretty, there's a lot of buffer in. There's a lot of buffer in there, believe it or not, and, uh, it's just, everybody's so busy. With bigger fish. Um. Uh, thank you for paddle, paddling, paddle grant, it's due tomorrow. Uh, for everybody at home that doesn't know what that is, I know everybody here got an email explaining.
I think it was on Etsy.
Yes, Etsy, um, Etsy. Uh, it's no synthetic stuff, this is natural wood, um. Red tail. The red tail, yeah. Uh. For the, it's really hard, I wish we had a render a visual. A visual, yes. A visual, um, this is tough, the.
On your own way.
Yes. The old sewer plant.
There it is.
The old sewer plant is gonna, you know, essentially be two purposes, well, maybe more, who knows? But it'll have a kayak ramp entering the river. Uh, with A D A access, uh, concrete ramp. Parking area, eventually lights, um. Uh, cameras, and then of course, very large dog park with a, uh. Administrator, well, it'll actually just be a bathroom and storage building for equipment. It was also A D A access along the way, so that whole area is gonna be turned into recreation. And, um, this grant here is just to get the concrete for the ramp for the most part, and the concrete for the A D A parking spaces. And to put the basin for the parking lot, it's not even gonna be the parking lot, it'd just be the gravel basin, that seventy five thousand dollars. And that's gone. Um, it didn't go very far.
Very good start, huh?
It is, it's a great start, it is a great start, so. And that's due tomorrow, uh, what I don't know is if we'll be able to apply for a second one to expand it and make it better. Which would be interesting if we can do it again next year. Um, the, another grant is due at the end of, uh. This month, meaning, uh, next month, March flood mitigation grant. What we're planning on putting forward is upgrading our flood pumps, which. The Monroe Street flood pumps, what that will include is a new concrete base and elevated platform and actually adding. A second, or adding a backup generator to that one as the primary pump and then changing out the pumps at the. Uh, pump station near the old city pool. And adding a connector for generators there, so not actually putting a generator, but just adding a connector. Uh, we learned two high water events ago. That, uh, the power just goes out too easy, put in the road station, or as often as it happens not to have a backup generator there. And it doesn't need to be a very big one for those two motors, so we're just gonna have one put in there. The Hocking River Water Line should be up for bid in April. So that will hopefully be underway by May or eight, or May, June timeframe. Phase two water is due in March, that, we talked about that briefly, the, the addition to that was the water line on Franklin Street. And the John Street, which are two panes. Uh, Franklin Street doesn't so much give us a whole lot of hassle, but it does have the lead joints, and so that'll be a nice, uh, addition to get that out of there. And that's due at the end of March as well. Nature Works two point O's coming about, um. Unless there's any objection, um, I know I was planning on pushing it toward the dog park folks, but, uh. If there's any other ideas out there, of course, that's for everybody, you know, for you guys to decide. Um, speaking of nature works, I didn't, Justin was the only one I heard back from as far as the playground equipment goes. That's A P. They don't buy, uh, by the way, they don't buy asphalt, in case you ever heard, um. But they, they might buy a pirate ship.
Stay out of the pirate ship, Corey.
You got the bid opening Friday.
Not this Friday, next Friday, it's a little week. So are we not, are we, am I just buying playground equipment? Alright.
I'm following Mr. Booth.
Good deal, nature works grand. Uh, two thousand dollar grants, ones for the signs that Elizabeth was talking about, then we have a pep grant that we apply for that anyone hurt hands can go get. The eight inch water main on Watkins Street that was, had the intersection closed was our big leak. That is in fact the one that, uh, we've been losing all water out of the last six weeks. And the utilities department has, uh, been looking for leaks, we've been calling it, we have a, an appointment with the company to come in. They listen for leaks all over, they'll actually drill the road to find it and pinpoint the leaks for us. We're getting to that point where we're gonna start finding and we're gonna reduce the jug of water over there. I want to get down to somewhere between ten and fifteen percent, right now we're at fifty seven, fifty eight percent. So, um, with that eight inch fix, we're probably in the forties right now, which is less than that now, but, uh. Down to ten or fifteen percent is where we need to be. The boys have been patching, uh, doing a really good job there. Our salt has been replenished, so we're clear full of salt again, I spent all the money on it, so. Um, all that's gone, if we have another event, we'll need more money, but if not, then we're good to go. Um, some of you may have seen the dust cloud today, you know what that means? Trying to clean up, uh, the dirt through the best we can with that, but, uh. As you know, aside from a brush and a skid steer, our only option was the sweeper for that, the meters, we talked about that, they're still going in. Um, still, uh, punching out a lot of bugs with that, working with customers every way possible. But, uh, unfortunately, there's been a lot of errors. Let's see. Right now we have three guys in, uh, water classes, so two are in water treatment one. Um, hopefully, uh, one of those will be interested in moving up to take over the water plant eventually, they eventually gonna get the water treatment three. And then right now I got one in wastewater one, so that's Zach, our new guy. And, uh, hopefully, he sticks around for the long haul. We'll eventually move into Sean's place in the long term and take over our wastewater. Uh, plant in the long run, so I know I've talked to him, you know, long, I mean, granted, it's gonna take him five years to get certified, but, uh. Long term, he seems to be interested in that kind of, uh, goal. We did have an overflow at the sewer plant with all the water, um, it was a ding from the E P A. It was an electrical issue that shorted out inside the panel, we've already fixed it. And taken, uh, measures to make sure it doesn't happen again, we, um, we all already answer back, it's just a matter of finalizing response. We didn't get fined or anything like that, but we did get a nasty grant. And then, um, today, we had the camera guys in town do, looking for I N I, Jason had a good idea of. Um, looking for it, so for folks at home, that's water infiltrating our sewer. Um, groundwater, we found on Backstreet, we have a brand new, um. Lift station, and when the river actually came out of the banks up into the park, the brand new lift station could not keep up with the water. Which doesn't make any sense, and, uh, cause they should have been able to pump it all out with ease. And, uh, we were down, or he called in the, uh, sewer guy with the tractor and found three or four major leaks that. Uh, stormwater is leaking into our sewer.
They found an eight inch line. We have no records.
Right, with two major, with one major hole in the top of it, uh, spewing water in, and we suspect it's going directly into a stormer.
Running straight towards the pump state, the flood.
So we gotta make, uh, arrangements for him to come back and finish that line out. And, uh. And then he did find a busted manhole that was a lot of ground, groundwater to come into it. What about the back of Kayler's house? Did he tractor that? Did that go into a manhole? Cause I saw he moved the grate. Okay, goes somewhere, but, uh. Um, did he go down Backstreet? Was there anything down there?
Manhole.
Was there problems down there too?
Kind of a manhole.
Okay. So anyways, we found major infiltration points and we're going to get those addressed. Um, pretty quickly. And that way we can, um, at least button those up and see if it makes any impact when the water comes up next time. But, uh, this summer, with all the construction slowing down, the new construction is basically gonna bump to probably beginning of winter. And with the exception of this, uh, this station right here. So the guys are gonna have a lot of the summer off, as far, what I mean by the summer off, I don't, I mean not really chasing contractors. So I really wanna try and get ahead on chasing water leaks and then addressing our I N I problem. And, uh, seeing if we can start getting ahead on a lot of those issues, especially before we move to the new sewer plant. And, uh, that'll also make the E P A extremely happy with us, so. They know we have a huge I N I problem, and quite frankly, we thought it was a bigger problem than Frog Hollow. However, we learned that that's not the case, Backstreet is. And, oh, two more things. I'm the new Becky.
Keep it brief.
Three water rescues, three water rescues, firehead with that nice new motor that they bought two years ago. I will eat the crow on that all day long. So, um, good job to those guys. We met with Director John Carey from the governor's office, really good discussion there. Hopefully gonna get a lot of money put toward our small cities project. You're nine hundred thousand short on that for everybody's, um. As I say, and then the sa- senior safety corridor, you know, we submitted for cap for that, we haven't found out yet what we got, so. Hypothetically, we're still eight hundred short on that, hopefully we get some tap. But also hopefully we get some assistance from the governor's office through a couple of different channels, not directly from the governor, but different channels that they have up there. Which will bring down our match quite a bit. And then, uh. Talked to FEMA today, uh, we are gonna have to run some questions, even though they showed the preliminary map or they're gonna pull the trailer park out of it. We still have to officially, um. Run our questions through the appeal process, which should be late summer this year, and then, uh. Yeah. We need to sue. So I don't know if I need your guys' approval to ask Bob, or if I just ask Bob.
Just ask him.
Just ask you, I need you to go sue that guy that owes us three grand.
Sure.
For water. Yeah, until today. Did you get a check from him?
Didn't get a check today.
Alright. And then we have another one that owes us twenty six thou- or twenty three thousand for hydrant. Maybe, maybe. Only if he uses black's law. That's it.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, I know we put out for the pool. Manager and for the person rec, have we gotten applications for those? Are we doing other advertising?
That's so funny. Yeah, we got Rudy for, uh, yeah, so Rudy, um, is, I'm going to do that, so I, but he can't do it until I have, uh. I owe, I didn't have time to get it in for this one, I need to do a. What am I thinking? Worked staffing ordinance.
Okay, yeah.
So I owe a staffing ordinance that would, uh, have that, the pool manager, the lifeguards. Quite frankly, pretty much owe you one to the whole city anyways. Um, you should have that every year, I mean, just re- do it every year. So I need to dust off one from last year and then put this year's date on it, um.
I just was wondering, I, cause I know that we posted it on the. Cities page and like on our social media, I just didn't know if we needed to like advertise for these things and like put super or anything.
Sure, um, so we got Rudy, um, which was good, we had another one apply, and she thought it was more of a full time position.
For the seasonal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like, uh. Monday through Friday.
Oh.
Yeah. Um. And then I do have every intention of asking you guys, uh, to, uh, increase the pay for him, fifteen hundred dollars. He's willing to mow the grass down there for an additional fifteen hundred dollars currently. His pay is either four thousand or forty five hundred, I don't remember, and then for an additional fifteen hundred, he'd be willing to mow the grass with our equipment. And, uh, fuel and everything else down there. So that would be a huge burden off Jason's guys, so. As soon as, um, as far as pool, uh, manager, nope, no, uh. So, yes, we do need to expand that, um. Definitely wider.
You might wanna think about, um. Posting it down with the aquatic center, I know you.
Sure. So.
Good idea.
Absolutely, and one of the other things too that, uh, Taylor was, uh, I don't remember the gentleman's name. But, uh. The guy's name from OU that reached out to you for summer interns. Was it seniors for, or was it, uh, master's program interns, paid internships?
A while ago?
Yeah.
Or, no, it was undergraduate, liberal science students. And I don't think it was just summer, I think it was, I think it was school year.
Okay, nevermind, not what I thought it was.
I have one, I have one question, so the lift station we're replacing. Over at B F W, have we corrected the problem with, uh, jails?
Yes, we have actually, so the E P A has worked with the jail and they are working with the L Z. They're not working with Michael Betts, but they're working with, um, the other engineer, Michael Betts and Boss up there, and they're working to. Come up with their own catchment device up there to catch bulk items before they come down the hill. So yes, that is a huge win for us.
Yeah, I didn't wanna throw a bomb in there. It's actually cut down right now, so.
Yes. This is a discussion, Mr. Dirk.
Yeah.
Don't rush it. Yes, sir.
I have a question, um, have you had any calls or comments on the change of the street lights where they're flashing now?
Not a one.
I've seen comments.
Not a one, I'm sure you have.
I'm running every chance I can.
Um, I mean, I haven't got a single complaint.
Okay.
Um. Just Facebook commandos. No, I've seen, I mean, I guess Dan complains every comment scene, but that doesn't.
No, I do know, I said it before, no, you know.
We just ignore it.
I do have a trash update though.
Okay.
So trash update, we did talk about that in committee, and, uh. Trash, the biggest problem is.
You're doing great.
They're picking up trash, but they're not taking it all, because there's a seven bag limit in the contract. So, um, as we talked about in committee, um, we're still gonna have him come in and explain, he's got a bunch of pictures too. The before and after, so they take pictures before and after. And, uh. So they're taking trash and they're, they're taking more than they're supposed to, so they say, I mean, um, I don't. Measure trash, so I don't, no, I mean, I'm not there. You know, I, so I can really assume that's equal to seven fifty five gallon bags, but, uh. You know, they take it, and if that's way more than what's supposed to be taken, then they don't take it. So part of the problem with us is because you, uh, council sets the fees. What? What does? The sticker mean when it comes to bags? So our stickers do not define bags. So one of the proposals was, or there's two proposals. The way Athens does it is, they'll just take everything and then send you the bill. And then, or, uh. Sell the tic, or what is it, two bags? Two, or yeah, two bags per sticker, which is equivalent to two fifty a bag. Whereas if, um, the other places where they sell it by the bag, or where they, where they charge in Athens, it's three dollars a bag is what they charge in Athens.
Is that commercial or residential?
Residential.
Okay, cause my issue was commercial.
So we did talk about the re- uh, that as well, now, if I were. I don't remember your specific situation as far as the. I know there was volume, or was it the price difference?
Both.
Okay.
Because the tags were purchased on a commercial account. And then found out you didn't need the tags for a commercial, they based it upon volume.
Right.
And what could have been a forty five dollar charge turned out to be three hundred.
Right. So. Well, I guess I got the answer for residential then, not so much the commercial side. Cause we quite honestly, I stayed pretty much out of the commercial side altogether. Where, and then the, and as Mr. Duffy pointed out in committee, the previous. See, and I don't remember if the contract said unlimited or if they just picked up unlimited, I don't remember.
Twenty bags.
Twenty bags. Twenty bags. Twenty bags.
So, I, I have a. Medium sized rolly thing, I don't have that little one, but I don't have like the big one. So I, I could have that plus.
A bag's considered a fifty five gallon bag.
Okay. But I have like thirteen gallon. Try, you know, kitchen garbage bags. And I have like, you know, two. Or three in there at the most, three could be like a heavy trash. I guess what I'm thinking is like, doesn't it, can it even out?
Can't get fifty five gallon bags.
You know, I only have two bags of trash, but you have nine. Like, at some point are we not kind of like? Evening well? Around town, I guess I don't understand.
So what a lot of that does, it stops people from outside dumping.
Yeah, I get that, I get that, that's funny.
I don't know, I don't know how they generate that many, I guess.
Guess it wouldn't be. No, I just, I just wanted to.
I don't, you know, Dan, that's a good point, I don't either, I mean, like I see some people's trash pout, but I'm like, what are they?
Yeah, what do they do?
Rec- recycle people, or how to recycle too.
I got something to say. You ready? Happy. No! Oh, no, we got stuff to do.
Oh, no, we got stuff to do.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Scott. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Now get powled.
Paddling rail come in handy.
The paddle of justice is probably still.
And be easily reviewed.
Yes.
Alright. Alright, quick question on the EV. Is, uh, is there a way to, for a boutique hotel to validate? The EV charger?
Well, I mean, how would you validate a free charger for it?
Well, if, if we have a fee and we, you know, I just wanted to, is there a way for a boutique hotel to ever pay, if it ever gets billed?
I mean, I think. Well, I think that those two builders that partner together usually take decades to finish anything. I, I, I mean, it might not even work right then.
It's going to be air charged.
Yes.
You know, so he also has a freaking dump truck with an air horn.
Like a wide road area. I have a.
What?
I was gonna say.
You have a rooster?
I was gonna say I have a rooster. I was, I was gonna say a very.
Large dump and people chuck yours. Stop, so anyway.
Throw it in your backyard.
Hey, alright, can we?
Alright, alright.
We exit this video, ready?
Alright, going down there.
Go to the order.
Go to the order.
Mr. Clement.
I'm good, thank you.
Greg's like a mouth. Mr. Taylor.
Oh my goodness. Ah, I, I, in the prayer, I wanted to, you know, um, for folks to, you know, think about those in Ukraine. And also I failed to mention that, uh, you know, pray for our soldiers too, uh, here, for all those that have, those serving, uh, keep them safe as well. With, uh, things that are happening around the world right now. So. Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Yeah, that's also, I was going to say, um, you know, prayers for the people of Ukraine, um, that peace comes quickly for them. And also for the Spangler family that they can start to heal.
Thank you. I will echo those comments for the Ukraine and the Spangler family. So, um, uh, I was up in Logan and I did some, uh, work in some people's houses up there that a realtor and, uh, another person in the community, and they were commenting on the question like, what are you guys doing in Nelsonville? Why has things changed? Why is the property value wanna, why is this? Why is that? Um, um, they noticed that their homeless has increased dramatically. And it all starts with leadership. And I'd just like to thank our leaders of the city and city council for all the good work that we've done. So. Mr. Sherman.
Good.
Got a splitter over there, something?
A little bit.
I think he's a little hard.
Okay, comes from working all day. Gotta try that.
Oh.
Just getting deep.
Alright, Mr. 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 Boot.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I want to echo Mr. Jones, but it was, uh, instead of its, uh, cost. Watch out for our military families and our, our boys, girls and women over there. Um, kinda like we talked about earlier with the stoplights and all that good stuff. Saw a comment on Facebook and I reached out to Jason today, uh, cause I was going to do anyway. It was, it was a good point that was put out there about something in the city that, you know, could use some attention. But I guess my point is we're the most open city government we've had here ever. Do I put it on Facebook? Call, text, email. Facebook, one of us, it's out there. But don't put it out there is, get it together Nelsonville. Just, hey, Mr. Frank, what do you think about that? I think this is a problem. What you gonna do? You're gonna address it, right? Work together with us here.
Um, I'm confident that my email and telephone number is published, uh, as well to be contacted. So.
Yep, we're, we're all very accessible. We're all out there. We're not hard to get in touch with. So, yeah. It, it doesn't have to be a continual, you know, like Jason had said in his comments there a few meetings ago. Let's work together instead of making it a negative environment all the time. Yeah, let's come together and do this thing.
Greg, Dan and I don't even leave city limits usually.
That's all. Alright, that's it. Thank you. Alright.
Um, motion to adjourn. Let me.
Second. Hold on.
You ran out of space. She ran out of people.
I did.
Thanks, Scott.
Get ready, light up.
Well, I don't know who, um, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Pennant?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Um, yes, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.